Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to those joining us at the Texas Tribune Studio 919 in downtown Austin and online for today's event titled "The Border and the Special Session." My name is Matt Ewald. I'm the Texas Tribune's Director of Events and Live Journalism. Last week during a special session of the Texas Legislature, the House passed three bills related to immigration and border security. HB6 appropriates $1.5 billion for border wall construction. HB4 provides state charges to allow for the arrest of people found to have crossed the border illegally. And SB4 increases penalties for stash houses and human smuggling. The passage of these bills come amid a precipitous increase recently in the number of migrants crossing the border from Mexico into Texas. Eagle Pass and El Paso have struggled to find secure shelter and transportation for migrants, with El Paso's mayor saying his city is at a breaking point. Today, we'll discuss these bills and the potential impact of these bills along the border, the current conditions along the border, goals for the Republican Legislature related to border security, and what a sufficiently secure border looks like. Our moderator for this event is Texas Tribune Managing Editor for News and Politics, Matthew Watkins, and our speakers include Kristin Etter, incoming Director of Policy and Legal Services at the Texas Immigration Law Council, Representatives Eddie Morales of Eagle Pass and Representative J.C. Jettan of Richmond. We thank those Texas Tribune members who are joining us in person and online today. Our journalism thrives thanks to support of our members. Texans deserve the truth, and we're dedicated to delivering it. If you're not a member, please consider a contribution, no matter the amount, to empower our mission, and you can show your support by going to texastribune.org/donate and donating today. And this Wednesday, November 1st, join us again here in Studio 919 and online as we'll look at public education beyond the special session, focused on the issues that aren't the focus of a special session but education advocates say require lawmakers' attention, including school funding, teacher recruitment and retention, and improving student performance. Today's program runs a little over an hour, a little longer than our typical programs. This includes a brief pre-recorded interview with a couple of our colleagues, and approximately 40 to 45 minutes for our panel discussion and your questions. We'll welcome questions from our audience here in Studio 919, and we'll ask questions on behalf of those joining us online. You can visit our Q&amp;A portal at texastribune.org/ask to submit your questions, and let us know where you're joining us from. So before we begin today's program, let me briefly introduce our panel. Our moderator, Matthew Watkins, oversees the day-to-day planning for news coverage at the Texas Tribune. He began working at the Tribune in 2015 and previously served as a reporter, breaking news editor, and politics editor. And now our panelists in alphabetical order. Kristin Etter is the incoming Director of Policy and Legal Services at the Texas Immigration Law Council. She has spent the last two years as the Special Project Director of Operation Lone Star at Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid. Democrat Eddie Morales Jr. serves as State Representative for District 74, the largest district in Texas, made up of 11 counties extending from his hometown in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, to the northeast portion of El Paso County, and includes over 770 border miles with Mexico. Republican J.C. Jettan, a seventh-generation Texan and the son of a Korean immigrant, represents the people of Fort Bend County in the Texas House of Representatives. Fort Bend County, one of the most diverse counties in the United States. Jettan also authored border wall funding bill HB6, which we'll discuss today. Before our panel begins, we do want to share a 10-minute conversation, pre-recorded, between Dave Harmon, Texas Tribune's Energy, Environment and Immigration Editor, and Tribune Immigration Reporter Uriel Garcia. This conversation was recorded on October 19th. Here's this video.
Hi, I'm Dave Harmon. I'm one of the editors at the Texas Tribune, and I'm here with Uriel Garcia, the Tribune's Border and Immigration Reporter based in El Paso, who's been covering all the twists and turns of our immigration policy and how they play out on the ground. We wanted to have a conversation today, a brief Q&amp;A, just to help everybody understand some of the basic facts around a complex and very politically divisive issue. So, Uriel, let's start with just some basics. In recent years, there's been a lot of coverage of large numbers of migrants arriving at the southern border. Why are so many people coming now, and where are they coming from?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what country they're coming from. We can take, as an example, right now Venezuela. Historically, the U.S. hasn't seen a lot of Venezuelan migrants, but in the past few years, they've had just a lot of political and economic instability for various reasons, political corruption, American sanctions on some of, on the country that has disrupted a bit the country's economy. Keep in mind Venezuela was one of the richest countries in Latin America at one point, and they've just had a hard time keeping up with their economy and with political corruption. It's just disrupted every day's lives in Venezuela. So, a lot of them are fleeing to different countries around South America, and some of them have decided to just come to the U.S. and try their shot here at a secure and stable life.
And we're also seeing a lot of migrants for the past several years coming from Central America as well, specifically Honduras and Guatemala. You've had conversations with a lot of migrants from those countries, and what are they telling you their reasons for coming to our border are?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that doesn't get talked about a lot is another example of what's driving migration is climate change. I've spoken to fishers and farmers who've told me that work is going down because of the different factors that climate change is causing to the land there or to the oceans. But also, at the same time, public safety. Public safety is one of the biggest reasons. A lot of them are being extorted for safety money. It is a very common theme that I hear from migrants, no matter what they're coming from, they're being extorted by gangs, saying, "Pay me X amount of money, and I'll keep you safe." But the amounts that they're asking for is basically, in some cases, half their salary. And so, either they stay and pay and not be able to feed their children or send their children to school, or if they don't pay, they're risking their lives. So, it's not, it's not an environment that they want to keep their children in. So, that's another reason why people are migrating from places like some of the countries you mentioned, Guatemala, Honduras.
Okay, so this is a big political challenge and a big logistical challenge for the United States. A lot of President Biden's critics have accused him of basically having an open border. Based on your experience, living there and reporting there, is the border really open for anyone to come in?
I mean, that question, as simple as it sounds, you know, doesn't really have a simple answer. But if I give a simple answer, the answer is no, it's not open. People can't just come to the border and cross, and that's it. I mean, even for those who are here legally or have the visas to come to cross the border, it's a process. It's, you know, even just going to Juarez for a weekend and coming back, it takes a while to get in. And that's even true for migrants seeking asylum. They can't just come in. They come in, they get arrested, they get background checked, they get held for days. Sometimes they're flown to other border cities to be processed in those areas. And after that, they're released, they're being tracked, they have a notice to appear. So, no, I guess the simple answer would be no. That's not necessarily open. I mean, and also, keep in mind, for people who want to say they want to close the border, again, it's not as simple as it sounds, because who are we talking about? Are we talking about the trade? Are we going to close the trade from Mexico to the U.S., tourists and things like that? So, I mean, it's not that simple. I mean, if you're closing the border, who are we closing it for and why?
How are the Biden administration's immigration policies different from what we saw under the Trump administration?
Well, they're different in some ways, and in other cases, they're the same. But let's talk about, I guess, some of the changes that have happened. I think something that the Biden administration has done is gone back to what historically the U.S. has done when dealing with migrants coming to the border, and that's arresting them, in some cases, charging them with illegal entry or illegal re-entry if they've done it multiple times, and they start deporting them. I think that's a key difference. Under the Trump administration, one of the biggest policies that the Trump administration used was Title 42, which is the emergency health order, and that was implemented in March 2020 in response to COVID. And the way it was being used at the border is that anyone who was coming to the border to seek asylum was simply turned away back to Mexico. They weren't being arrested, they weren't being charged, they weren't being processed, they just got their identity, and they were turned back to Mexico. And so, what ended up happening is that a lot of them, a lot of the migrants were just kept trying to come over and over again, and that's what increased the number of apprehensions. And so, that's one key difference. You know, there are other policies that we can talk about all day, right, like Remain in Mexico, third-party or third-country, third countries for asylum seekers. And that was one in which the Trump administration tried to get asylum seekers to seek asylum in a third country before seeking asylum in the U.S., and that's something the Biden administration is trying to implement now. So, that's what I meant earlier by, they're the same yet different, and there's just different policies being implemented. And every few months, the Biden administration has implemented turn-of-the-screw policies. I'll give you an example. One of them was just yesterday, earlier this week, the Biden administration started deportations back to Venezuela, and that's something we have not seen in a while, because Venezuela and the U.S. do not have diplomatic relations. And the U.S. and Venezuela have restarted those relations, and that allowed the U.S. to deport 100 migrants from Harlingen, Texas, back to Venezuela.
Meanwhile, the state of Texas has gotten heavily involved in border security, specifically since the start of the Biden administration, right? So, talk a little bit about what you've seen state government doing on the border.
Yeah, I mean, since early 2021, the year Joe Biden became president, Governor Abbott has responded with different tactics to try to stem illegal immigration, including sending National Guard and state troopers to the Texas-Mexico border to arrest apprehended migrants crossing the border, and if they're crossing into private property, charge them with trespassing. And so, that's one tactic that they've used, right? They've also set up some concertina wire along different parts of the border, including El Paso, Del Rio, Eagle Pass. And as well, in Eagle Pass, they've set up a thousand-foot water barrier. It's a string of buoys put together, and in between the buoys, there's what looks like a sharp, a sharp object between them. It's in a part of the river where it's pretty shallow, so migrants, as what I've, when I went to go visit, what I saw is that migrants are simply walking around the buoys. But the point is that the state has been doing everything to send a message to migrants that it's going to be hard for them to cross into Texas, and then when they do, they're going to be arrested.
And you saw that barrier firsthand, right, during a visit to Eagle Pass?
Right. There was a kayaking business who gave us a tour, and we were able to go up to the buoys pretty up close. That's how I know that they have that serrated saw in between the buoys, and that's how I know also that it's pretty shallow. I was able to walk to the buoys and touch it myself.
Uriel, thanks for your time. Thanks for helping people understand what you're seeing on the border.
Yes, no, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this event, both in the room and online. Once again, my name is Matthew Watkins. I'm Managing Editor of News and Politics for the Texas Tribune. I know we've given an introduction, but now that everyone is on the stage, I'll just put a name to a face really quickly before we launch into the questions. Right here to my immediate left is Representative Eddie Morales, a Democrat from Eagle Pass. Thank you for being here. We have Kristin Etter, has been Special Projects Director for Operation Lone Star with Texas Rio Grande Legal Aid, and is now incoming Director of Policy and Legal Services for Texas Immigration Law Council.
Good morning.
And thank you for being here. And at the far left here, we have State Representative J.C. Jettan, a Republican from Richmond. Thank you for being here. All right, so I want to start just with a little bit more of a kind of setting the baseline of the conversation, of the situation at the Texas border. We have, of course, Representative representing the largest portion of the border of anyone in the Texas Legislature right here, and your hometown is Eagle Pass, which is, in a lot of ways, been sort of the epicenter of what's been going on at the border over the summer. I think both, a lot of focus being paid, attention being paid to it by both critics of the Biden administration, you know, raising concerns about, you know, migration kind of overwhelming border communities, as well as people upset about the Abbott administration's handling of various things, concertina wire or things like that. So, I wondered if you could just start, you know, one thing I wrote down was, in one day last month, it was reported that 2,500 migrants passed over into Eagle Pass in one day. That's a city of 30,000 residents, so a very large amount of people, a lot of resources strained. How does that play out in a city like Eagle Pass? What does it mean for the city to be seeing that kind of traffic at the border?
Well, thank you for giving us an opportunity. And, you know, I've lived all my life in Eagle Pass, other than the four years at the University of Texas and then the three years at St. Mary's Law School. So, I think very fondly of Eagle Pass and love the environment, love the community. Obviously, it presents a challenge whenever you have so many numbers come in, and that's where I think, and why I was a joint sponsor of Operation Lone Star the first time around last session, because that was what our local stakeholders and elected leaders needed. You know, we saw the migrant search taking place specifically in Del Rio the years past, where we went from 2,000 to 15,000 almost overnight. And so, we didn't want that, at least on my end, I didn't want that to happen in any one of my border communities that I represent, over 770 miles of a shared border with Mexico. It's unfortunate that it happened in Eagle Pass. I think we acted quickly. I was able to get ahold of Director McCraw, and he was able to immediately send troopers to assist. And I think that's where that service comes in handy, to provide border security and provide that feeling to the community, like we are addressing the need. But it's unfortunate, because DPS can't do anything about stopping that flow. And we can't also have somebody that, you know, President Biden, and I respect what he's done in so many levels, whether it's getting us out of the recession, what he's done, you know, in flying into Ukraine in a moment of crisis, what he's done in Israel also. But on this one issue, we have somebody that he's designated as a border star that has never actually visited the border. And that's unfortunate, because it leaves it open for the opposition to attack Biden and the White House. Now, we all know, and I think the focus should really be on Congress for failure to act in over 30 years. And that's why, when I was thinking and thinking and processing, how can we address this? What can we do? Well, if Congress is not going to act, then we should, at the state level, implement the Texas Secure Our Border Migrant Processing and Jobs Plan, so that we can bring that relief. And if the Department of Justice or the White House wants to challenge us, I'm all for it, because I want to show up Congress that the state can lead on that issue much more and can be something that other states begin to emulate if Congress continues to just, you know, and its failure to take action. So, I'm happy to have worked with local, the mayor, the city council, the county judge, and the commissioners. And even though we are primarily a Democratic community, you know, even Democrats are asking for us to address this issue. And if you don't know all the intricacies between state and federal government, that's, I think, where we lose, end up losing people, where they're just disgruntled or unhappy with their elected leaders. And I think it's up to us to also be a form of educating and informing the public so that they can know some of the issues that we're facing up here in the Capitol or up there in Congress.
So, what is the challenge? You described the challenges it creates, you know, 2,500 people crossing over in a day, that's obviously a very large amount in a small community. Very few of those, I would assume, migrants are planning to actually stay in Eagle Pass, right? They're crossing over there and, you know, planning to go out around the country. So, what exactly is it the challenges that the city, the county government, needs help with?
So, the challenge, and right now, they're not evading at all. I need you, for those viewers, they are coming straight through our downtown. Shelby Park and the golf course are right downtown. They are not even half a mile from City Hall. They come directly, and yet, like they were saying, and the buoys were being shown, they'll just go around the buoys to come up, and they will walk up to either a Border Patrol or a trooper, because they know that then that they will be processed. And so, the immediacy and the challenges are with having those high numbers, and then having our Shelby Park and our golf course being overtaken, and then the Border Help Care Facility, where a lot of these migrants are then sent. But other than that, which is different from years past or during the Trump presidency, where they were all going all over the community and into people's backyards, that provided more of a concern to a lot of the community. And I would get either Ring camera or screenshots of, you know, it's 9 o'clock at night, I'm at work, and my family and my kids are there, and I just saw this on the Ring camera in the backyard. And so, those were, anybody would be concerned. And I think at the same time, it's important for people to understand, every one of us in this room, and probably every one of the viewers also, or listeners that you have, if we were, if we were in their shoes, and we couldn't feed our kids the very next day because of the economy in our country, we would be doing exactly the same thing, and we would not be waiting for a piece of paper for five or 10 years to tell us that we could cross that river. And for us, I think it's naive to think that if they've trekked thousands of miles through jungle-infested, you know, areas, through cartels, having to deal with human smugglers, razor wire in a buoy is not going to stop them, when they can see right there the promised land. It's unfortunate. So, I think we need to change the narrative. We need to start focus on making sure that we address this migrant processing, that we generate revenue. We have spent close to $10 billion of Texas taxpayers' monies. It's time that we find a way to generate that revenue back, and the Texas Secure Our Border Migrant Processing and Jobs Plan would do that. We have 8,000 crossings that are taking place. If we were to charge $2,000, that would be $16 million a day, and that would be over $5 billion annually that we could collect just in the initial migrant processing fee. For those that think it's outlandish to be charging a migrant $2,000, the mayor of Piedras Negras was able to conduct an audit of when the migrant search was first taking place. He retrofitted a maquiladora and put all these migrants in there, and in that audit, he was able to find out that they had $2,000 to $5,000. Last week in the committee hearings, you heard anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000 that they were paying the cartels and the human smugglers to get them across. The money is there. We were able to generate that, implement that, you know, you're going to come in and pay into the system, not take from the system. It's a narrative that I have to sell because, to the Republican base in addressing this issue, because they're of the opinion that they just come and they're going to mooch off the system, even though migrants are not eligible for 99% of welfare-type benefits, just an emergency. And it has happened, because we have had, for example, Fort Duncan, the CEO of Fort Duncan, the regional hospital there, called me and told me, "We can't go and tap into the indigent fund, because the migrants are not considered, you know, residents of the community." So, it's exposing me and leaving millions out there and having to address these emergencies that happen with the concertina wire, or people breaking their arms, their ankles, their legs, or having serious cuts that require, you know, surgical intervention.
Representative, you joined your colleague up here on the stage for a visit to Eagle Pass last week, along with other members of House leadership. Tell us what you saw there and what you learned from that experience.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the representative hosting us in Eagle Pass. I had the opportunity to go down to the border back in 2021 as well, right after the regular session, because this has been an ongoing problem, and we're aware of that. What I saw in 2021 wasn't completely dissimilar to what I saw this time in terms of, you have the river, you have the gathering of individuals on the Mexico side, where a smuggler ends up organizing them, prepares them to move across the river. And despite us, you know, hovering around in DPS helicopters, they'll move the migrants across the border, and they did go around the buoys. We watched it. And made their way to the other side, where they were met by, I think it was National Guard at that point, and eventually Border Patrol. And that happens, you know, day and night, constantly, over and over again. And this is, I think this is the root of what we're trying to address. I think we have, you know, just kind of jumping into a little bit, I think we have a two-front issue. We have the humanitarian side, which we talk a lot about, where there are families trying to get to the United States from all over the world. We got the list from DPS showing all the different countries that they're coming here from. But they've come to the conclusion that the way that you come to the United States to get the American dream is by hiring a smuggler and coming across the Rio and entering illegally. And my concern with that is that when they arrive on our side, they're living in the shadows of our society. They're not getting to enjoy the American dream the way that we know the American dream. And so, how do we address that? And a lot of that is Congress, and in a complete lack of effort over the last several decades, we're aware of that. And so, how do we deal with that on the state side? And this is where the other front comes in, where we know we also have a security issue. We know that there are members of the terrorist watch list that have been apprehended coming across the border, and those are just the ones apprehended. We know that drugs are coming across the border, we know that crime is coming across the border, we know that we have a safety concern, a safety issue that we have to address also. And so, our mission, in my opinion, has been, when I talk about mission, I'm talking about states, our state's mission, Operation Lone Star Texas Mission, is to make sure that people enter through a legal port of entry, so that there's an inspection of the individual coming in. That's our desire. And so, the tools that we end up investing in in the state legislature are all tools that are designed to ensure that the areas in between legal ports of entry are tightly secured, so that we're directing both, you know, families trying to obtain the American dream legally, coming here, entered through that legal port of entry, but also to make sure that anybody else left trying to enter in those areas are more likely the criminals attempting to do harm to our state and country. And so, I'll just leave it at that for now, then.
You have, I've written this written down during the time as Special Projects Director for Operation Lone Star. That organization repped 3,000 people charged with, I believe, state-level crimes through Operation Lone Star during that time. You've really seen kind of firsthand, sort of the back end of the state's border security efforts and everything like that. We talked a little bit already about kind of narratives around the border. I'm curious how you would kind of compare that narrative to the reality of what you see speaking with migrants and dealing with the policies in the border down there.
Right, thanks, Matt. So, I think one of the points I want to make here is that Operation Lone Star has actually not just not been effective, as we see the numbers of crossings irregularly have increased, but also it has really served as an attractant rather than a deterrent. And the reason I say that is just because, what Representative Morales mentioned, our clients that we've represented, primarily, you know, migrants from South and Central America, as well as all over, we have clients from the, you know, other side of the world, they are coming here because they believe that the borders are open. The borders are not open, because otherwise, they could present themselves to a port of entry. So, when we hear, you know, they should just go to a port of entry, that is not, that is just not an option for people that are trying to come here to work in our country. And so, what we see, just like Representative Morales mentioned, they see presence of military and law enforcement presence in the Eagle Pass area, for example, and they're attracted rather than deterred. They're not trying to circumvent law enforcement, they're actually trying to turn themselves in to request asylum. And that's exactly what we've seen with our clients. The majority of our clients, especially in the Eagle Pass area, number one, are actually not from Mexico. We have very few clients, global, my Global migration patterns do change, but since at least June of this year, very few of the people that have been crossing through Eagle Pass are actually from Mexico. So the majority of them are asylum seekers and federal law authorizes them to present themselves in just the way that they're doing it. Ports of entry are closed to them, so they are presenting themselves at places that are other than a designated port of entry, which is exactly what federal law authorizes them to do. And that's what they're trying to do. They're not trying to circumvent, they're not trying to circumvent, you know, they're just trying to turn themselves in. And so what we have now at the border is really state processing of immigrants into Texas.
Right. And so the sort of idea, the picture maybe in popular culture around the immigration is migrants crossing the river, crossing the border, trying to evade being seen. And what you're describing is it's actually the opposite, they are crossing the river looking for Border Patrol or DPS in this case.
Correct. And many of our clients are actually directed by Texas state officials to certain points on the river and they're told, you need to go here, they're being directed, and then they're being arrested for criminal trespass. And I will tell you that our clients are actually, if given the choice, they will choose to be arrested because they are fleeing persecution, they're fleeing dangerous conditions in Mexico. And so it's really not a deterrent, it's an attractant.
So as I've already mentioned, this is of course, you know, immigration, you know, historically a federal issue, but the state has made the decision that the challenges have risen to a level that they want to act. So I want to talk for a little bit now about the actions that the legislature is taking during this special session. You know, last week, the House passed three significant bills related to immigration. You have HB four, which is basically creating a state offense for illegal entry. You have HB six, which is the bill that you authored about the border wall funding. And then you have SB four, which is related to stash houses and human smuggling. We can talk about all of those. I want to start with your bill, HB six, $1.5 billion for additional state-funded border wall. Tell us why this was part of the strategy and why $1.5 billion?
Sure. So, yeah, so House Bill six covered, is $1.5 billion for the maintenance operation and construction of border barrier infrastructure, which is primarily your border wall. These are the same 30-foot border walls that were put up during the Trump administration. And it was brought to us by, of course, the governor's office and working with Operation Lone Star, Texas DPS. And part of the overall strategy for securing our border is ensuring that we have proper barrier infrastructure. One of the main reasons we have border barrier is to not only prevent deter in that specific area, but it does help to funnel and this helps with personnel issues. As we saw with the buoy, they're not going through the buoy, they're going around it. The more border barrier infrastructure in place, the more areas where we can funnel personnel to make sure that we're addressing the issues as they're coming across the border. And so when it comes to, what was that delay? So this is the second legislative session where we've done funding for the border barrier infrastructure. First one was 87th legislative session, I think it was 900 million we put in. During this regular session, it was 650 million. The additional 1.5 is because there was a ramp up in the number of easements that had been transferring over to the state for the border barrier to be built, which is a significant increase. I mean, this is a shift in the mindset of landowners in terms of, all right, we have a problem, people are crossing through my land, I'm not able to do the things that I used to be able to do on my land. And so I'm going to go ahead and allow the state to build this wall on my property. And the number of landowners on the border right now is increasing that want to do this. Working with the Texas Facilities Commission, 1.5 million takes, or billion takes us from where we're at now to the next legislative session where, again, we get to readdress, how much are we going to invest in the border infrastructure? And as kind of mentioned earlier, we have invested significant amount into border security. And I would love for that $10 billion and all the future dollars to go towards more state functions, public education, public health. There's a lot of things that we need to address in this state. But with what's happening on our southern border and the lack of action from Congress, this is the direction that the state of Texas has to continue to go in to make sure that we're securing our communities and keeping them safe. And so we'll continue to go down this route, I think, until that's addressed. And I kind of want to address, I have some concerns over, you know, because we were in Eagle Pass and we watched as the legal ports of entries are there and individuals are crossing over the Rio and entering through nonports of entry. And why is that? And that is a frustrating point to me because it feels like we are incentivizing entry through nonports, legal ports of entry where there's not inspections. And that is not a state decision. The state didn't decide that, all right, the way we're going to handle those who cross illegally through those nonports of entry are going to be somewhat expedited and more beneficial than that legal entry through the ports of entry. That's not a state of Texas decision, that was, that's our federal government making these decisions. Those are the type of things that at our federal government level have to be disincentivized because this, it is dangerous and it is a, and it causes humanitarian crisis issue. And that's my main point, that's my big request to the federal government is, hey, let's stop expediting illegal entry outside of the legal ports of entry and start working on, focusing on our ports of entry.
Matt, can I add, under the Texas Secure Our Border, that's exactly what we would do. We would then divert and funnel, as J.C. has mentioned, everyone through our land ports. That would be the kind of, you know, in return for you following our orders at the state level, use the land port, don't expose our law enforcement out there on the river, treat migrants humanely. The need for some of these landowners along the border wanting this fence is because you're having these issues where thousands and thousands of waste and clothing that then is then just left there on their property and other damages that are caused. I mean, the ranchers and the landowners along the River Vega, they're fed up with it, right? And they have to deal with it constantly. The state can take control over that by us being the ones that direct them through the land ports and say, if you come, you will face, and I'm all for, I mean, I supported one of these bills that imposed a criminal penalty. And so if you do that and you still decide to cross the river, there will be repercussions and you will face criminal penalties. That way we get everybody through the land port and we treat folks humanely. I think that if I was governor, you know, I would want to work and make sure that I'm working with the governor of Coahuila, the safest state in the union of Mexico. That's why they're coming through there. The word spreads in Latin America that that's, those are the chances of you being exploited are less if you come through Coahuila. And so we have all these nearshoring projects that are taking place in the billions of dollars with Mexico. We became the largest trading partner. We need to, I would much rather, and I agree with J.C. in our boat right when we visited Eagle Pass, I know that for a limited purpose, I would be supportive of a border wall and very hard-to-reach terrain like Big Bend National Park or Big Bend State Park, which is in my district. But for the most part, I'd like for those funds to be used, for example, like eradicating the Carriço cane that everyone, Border Patrol and troopers have told us, that is the number one issue that we have because we could be two feet away and we don't know that somebody's hiding in the Carriço cane. I would want that $1.5 billion mostly to go, for example, on the 44 miles that we can connect Eagle Pass to Laredo along the River Vega as a border security issue, but then also it becomes an economic then project because it connects these two communities now 30, 45 minutes shorter distance from the route that we usually take. And then it provides commerce again and another point by which then we have all these 18-wheelers. And Laredo needs the help. Remember, they are flooded with all of the commercial traffic that's coming. Eagle Pass is the fastest growing economy on the border. We're very happy with that, some of the projects again. And one of those projects, if it comes to fruition, the economic report is that it's going to generate $28 billion in annual GDP to Maverick County. It's going to create 100,000 jobs in the next 15 years. Think what we would do if we would embrace that concept and we have 800,000 jobs that remain unfilled in the state of Texas, a 4% unemployment rate. We need these jobs. I've been staying at the hotel for the last two or four weeks. Every one of the cleaning crews is minority, you know, Hispanic, of Hispanic origin. We need these folks. You talk to the ranchers, the farmers, they need these people. Even when I go into bastions of what you would consider red, deep red counties, Republican, San Angelo, Lovoc, I was out there, Clardy's District also. I mean, when we visit about the border panel, they're like, this is what we need. We'd love to be able to employ these folks and not face the repercussions from it.
You mentioned supporting some increased criminal penalties. I assume you're referring to Senate Bill four, the measure that would increase the maximum, or sorry, the minimum penalty for operating a stash house from a, to essentially five years in prison, raising it from a Class A misdemeanor. Also in that bill, I would believe, would increase the minimum for human smuggling to a 10-year minimum. Why, most Democrats oppose this bill, although as you noted in a press release after, a good number of Democrats along the border ended up supporting it. What's the disconnect there and what caused you to kind of get behind that bill?
And that's one of the issues also. I really have a difficult time understanding how somebody from Dallas can tell me how the border should be run. And that's somewhat of a difficult concept, I understand, when you're a representative, you're a representative and you can file any bill. But same time, no one, not even the governor, has actually taken the time to say, well, let me talk to Eddie Morales, the guy that represents nine out of the 14 counties, to see what he would want to do in his district. Or let me talk to, or for example, other than with Director McCraw, which we do have a very good relationship and we do on a regular basis communicate about the border. But the reason why I did it is because those are the folks that I have seen are the problems. Those are the ones that are running and through towns on highways, running through ranchland and, you know, creating all this mess on fences and also, you know, either killing people, injuring them. And so I wanted to send a clear message, if you participate in that sort of conduct, there will be repercussions and we need to be tough on that sort of criminal activity. And that's why I did it and I support it and because our local elected officials also need a relief.
There were concerns expressed by some Democrats and opponents of the bill, including you, I believe, in committee, about the human smuggling aspect of this and a 10-year minimum. I mean, you know, it's possible to get convicted of murder in Texas and serve less than 10 years and, you know, a worry that someone could maybe be accused of human smuggling for, for instance, driving a family member, you know, to, you know, another town in Texas or anything like that. Tell us a little bit about your worries there.
Yeah, sure. So the human smuggling statute in many ways, it's a misnomer because we have a depiction of who is a human smuggler. And after spending two years representing people who are charged with human smuggling, I have to say that they are young people, primarily US citizens, that are simply driving passengers in their vehicle from point A along the border to their final destination. And so it's not the person that we have in terms of the image in our head of a human smuggler. And the human smuggling statute is so broad that it criminalizes conduct now with a mandatory minimum of 10 years for simply using a vehicle to transport a person with an intent to conceal that person from law enforcement. That's all the statute requires. And so some of the concerns that you heard from legislators when they testified against this bill, Senate Bill four, was that it does ensnare and it will ensnare people that have undocumented family members, friends, or anybody in their vehicle, they're going to now be subject to this 10-year mandatory minimum. I have clients who, again, we're not talking about, there was a lot of testimony that people are being smuggled in trunks and tractor trailers. The majority of people charged with human smuggling in Texas are Uber drivers, essentially giving people a ride in their car seated as passengers. The intent to conceal provision of the statute, really what we see law enforcement, how we see law enforcement interpreting that, is if the passenger in your vehicle is undocumented, they are going to presume that you had an intent to conceal that person from law enforcement. So the concern is, a lot of these mixed status families, a lot of people that, for example, have workers that might be undocumented, if you're driving with them in a car, you will be subject to the 10-year mandatory minimum. So it's a very broad statute and it's not going to penalize the people that I think we have in our mind, we're tending to penalize with the smuggling statute.
I'll just add on to that because it's, I definitely understand the concern. What was talked about was, when we went down to the border and we talked to the DA, there was addressing, you know, the smuggling portion of this. And there's a whole social media network that exists for recruiting young individuals and convincing them that, hey, you need to go, you know, pick this person up here, drop them off over here and we'll, you know, we'll pay you some money. The reason that we needed to go and raise the penalties is to discourage that type of activity. We want to make sure that within our communities, we're talking to our kids and saying, hey, when you're looking at social media and someone's offering you a whole lot of money to go move someone, you should probably question that and also recognize that, hey, there's some big penalties to go along with that now. Because there's, that network is so big. It used to be that you just, you know, you operated just along the border and, you know, found kids to help with this. But as the DA said, this has become a statewide thing. This is such a massive network of individuals that they need to be able to move people. By increasing the penalties, we are cracking down on that even more and making it more difficult on the cartels. They are, and this is based on the DA's, you know, testimony of having to deal with individuals that they're catching and how they're being recruited. And so the actual laws revolving around smuggling and stash houses did not change. And so, just to be clear on that, there's no new law that says, hey, now we're going to do this. It is a, hey, if you do this, as it was before, there's going to be higher penalties. I just want to clarify on that.
Matt, I'd like to add also that, you know, I didn't take that vote lightly. I considered it, especially, for example, my mostly Spanish-speaking mom, she has a ranch in Camado, which is a community 15 miles north, it's a farming community 15 miles north of Eagle Pass. And she is the most loving, caring, I mean, she will give the shirt off her back. And I could envision, and I had to have this discussion with her and other family members of, please do not pick up anybody, especially if I'm voting for a bill that will likely end up putting you in prison for something that you were just doing out of your act of kindness and it could be perceived either by a rogue DA or something, like, let me just make an example out of Eddie Morales's mom. And so it's unfortunate, but, you know, those are the realities that we have to live with and I had to make a decision of, you know, making sure that I inform not only my family but our communities and then also focus on the aspect of making sure that people know that we're serious about this and that we need to do things differently and we need to think outside the box. For so many years, how many more years are we going to need? I mean, we've led close to three years, we've appropriated the $5 billion and then the $4.5 billion in this session. How many more years do we need to continue doing the same and expecting different results? How many more years are we going to say, you know, maybe we should talk about a governor workforce cooperation agreements between the governor of Texas and the governor of Coahuila or any one of the other states in Mexico? How about some bracero-type farm worker visas, you know, ranch bracero-type visas also? How about, you know, as governor, why are you not taking a bigger step with the ninth largest economy in the world and have a say-so by going into Mexico and having a symposium or discussing those issues with the elected leaders also of Latin America and focusing on what we can do to make sure that we're stopping the flow? The border wall would go, it would be a whole lot cheaper if we did it on the southern end of Mexico than if we tried to cover all of the Mexico and Texas border.
The last bill that was passed is the one where I think there's the least amount of agreement on this stage and in the Capitol as well. House Bill four, a very emotional debate when it came up last week. This is the bill that creates a new state offense for illegal entry into the state. It would be a Class B misdemeanor, 180 days in jail, but I think probably more significantly it creates a situation where in lieu of the arrest, an officer can return the migrant they have arrested to a port of entry and order them to return to the country, you know, Mexico in this case. This is a bill that many Democrats on the House floor, many in the Hispanic community have raised real concerns about whether this could prompt, you know, racial profiling in the way it's enforced. I'm going to read a quote from a statement that you put out after the release where it says, "At the end of the day, I could tell many of my Republican colleagues's hearts were not in it. And the only reason this bill passed was due to political pressures by the extreme far-right wing of the party." Representative Jutan, I will ask you first, I mean, why did you vote for it? Why did the party pass it? Do you agree with the assessment there?
I don't agree that it was from the far-right part of our party. I think when you look at what the governor put on the call, which is all in conjunction with working with Operation Lone Star or DPS, our military on the border and determining what are the best tools that we can use to further secure our border, these are the recommendations that were brought forward, this is what the legislature addressed. And so, you know, I think we are primarily looking through that lens. We're not there on the border, I don't pretend to know. border. I don't pretend to know what's happening in Eagle Pass. I'm in Richmond. We do have, you know, we just had a recent stash house crackdown within Fort Ben County. I recognize how it's impacting my community in my county. But when we, when we go to figuring out, all right, what tools, what resources does Operation Lone Star, our boots on the ground on the border need, this was brought up as one of them. And it's, again, unfortunate that we have to essentially duplicate a law that's already in the books at the federal level. But in the absence of that action happening from the federal level, the state of Texas has to act. And when we talk about, you know, why did we have to increase penalties and different things on trespassing and other, the other misdemeanors on the border, it was so that there was an understanding, so there was a record for when the federal government was looking at deportations, that there's something there. This is a crime. It is a crime to illegally enter into the United States, illegally enter into Texas now, once the bill is signed by the governor, outside of a legal port of entry where there can be an inspection. And, you know, I feel that that is accurate and right, and now a responsibility of the state of Texas, which, again, federal government should be handling this. We would prefer the federal government to handle this, but in the absence of that, that is why I was in favor of it.
I respectfully disagree with my colleague. We came in the same year. But, you know, where did the governor get that? We are listening on that issue, especially the Republican Party is listening to the extreme far right, to the loudest in the rooms, the, you know, alleged Nazi sympathizer, Nick Fuentes, Stickland and Rinaldi. That's who they're getting their messaging from. And in order to address the issue, it hasn't gone well for the Republicans with the whole Paxton debacle. I voted, I supported it. I mean, he should have been impeached. And and for the Senate not to take the action. But now you've got a list from Paxton of 19 of my colleagues that are being targeted. Most of them are very reasonable individuals that we work well with in the House. And now because of that, they're having to be tough on crime and have this red meat piece for their base to be able to say, look, I did what, you know, the governor asked for. The seriousness of it is that we need to have the adult conversation in the room, and we need to lead by example. And yet, we're listening to the loudest, which doesn't necessarily mean that they're the ones that are right. But they're just because they're loud and they're being, and they're constant. Let me tell you, and I thought about this because I woke up about five times overnight, they're drilling on the block and a half away from the hotel all night. And I don't know if you all live close to the Hilton by University, but they were just drilling. I think they're were doing some construction work. And it was just nonstop drilling. And it made me think of, this is exactly what our reasonable colleagues on the Republican are having to face with the Sticklands, the Rinaldis, and these, you know, the these billionaires from East Texas. They have ungodly amounts of money that they just keep dropping, and they just keep hitting and hitting and hitting and hitting until somebody ends up paying attention to them. And Twitterverse is not, that's not where you, you end up getting your votes. But many of the colleagues end up being somewhat concerned about the comments that come out there. And it's unfortunate because we should be having these comprehensive immigration and migrant processing and workforce discussions. And yet, it's so much more simpler to just say, we're tough on crime, and that's it. And that's your, now you've got that pin, and now you can claim victory. And it's unfortunate.
I'm sorry, I feel like I have to respond because I respect you a lot, Representative Morales. But what you did was you questioned my integrity on why I would vote for a bill. There's, there's, I am confident in my position with the vote that I did on Paxton impeachment during the House, and I have stood by that. When it comes to Nick Fuentes and what's happening with our party, I have been strongly vocal on that, as has our Speaker of the House and the members in our delegation. There is, there is no doubt that there are loud individuals on the far right side. We recognize that they represent a minority within our party. And there are a lot of reasonable people in my district and around the state that believe that what we're doing on our border, the number one secure, number one issue for voters, for constituents, is the border security. That's, that's all of them. That's not just the far right. That's, that's your, that's your Democratic sheriffs, that's your across the board.
So let's try addressing it.
No, let me finish real quick, because this is, this is a tool that was brought to us by the governor, working with, what we're doing with Operation Lone Star in terms of addressing a serious concern we have in our state. That's why I voted for it.
All right. So that's not going to stop. The migrants are going to keep coming. As long as they, as soon as they get to the River Vega, we have to then process them and give them the asylum paperwork. So any action that we do, whether we put more funding for Operation Lone Star, whether we enhance the criminal penalties, it doesn't address the core issue. And it doesn't address the work that Kristen had to do, for example, with the 800 criminal trespass charges that you faced on one particular property. It was also my client's property. So again, I don't, my intent was not to, to question your integrity. It was more so of where was the, where was the perception coming from as to why this needed to be passed by those elected leaders that sent then the instructions down?
And I have to say that Operation Lone Star has really misappropriated the criminal justice system to attempt to enforce and deter immigration into Texas. And this is that, but on steroids. So this piece of legislation is one of the most dangerous and unconstitutional pieces of legislation, I think, in Texas that's been ever proposed. And it's because it literally gives a license to every peace officer in Texas with the ability to round up and arrest or remove from the country any immigrant that they want. And the point of the legislation is that it is now going to be a crime if you enter Texas at a place other than a port of entry. How do you know that that person has not entered in a port of entry, through a port of entry unless you visually observe it? So what happens is that immigrants all over the state are going to be subject to consensual encounters. Officers can just roll up to a job site and begin to ask, hey, did you enter through a port of entry? If the answer is no, guess what? That person can be rounded up, arrested, or now, under House Bill Four, in lieu of arrest, that person can be driven to a port of entry and ordered to be removed to that foreign nation, so presumably Mexico, even if that person is not from Mexico. So it is a very dangerous and unconstitutional piece of legislation that has the potential of ruining the economy in Texas.
Really, really quickly, from a lawyer's perspective, you've used the word unconstitutional a couple of times. I mean, what do you think the odds are that this actually, you know, holds up in court?
Well, very, very slim. I mean, I think the point of this piece of legislation is to set up a battle at the US Supreme Court to challenge Arizona v. US. So, I mean, it's so unconstitutional from the illegal entry perspective because it violates the supremacy clause. It's also very unconstitutional because it affords a person no due process. They're subject to being removed from the state. And so, again, we're going to be looking at a situation where anybody and everybody is going to be subject to these show me your papers stops, these consensual encounters, reasonable suspicion detentions, or probable cause to arrest, and then they're subject to being removed from the state. It's very dangerous, and it's going to cause a lot of immigrants in Texas to be legitimately fearful for their safety and their security and their life and livelihood here in Texas.
I want to, we'll go to audience questions immediately after this, but I want to ask one more question to you, Representative Jutan, which is, it's been mentioned, you know, we've talked about $10 billion more or less being appropriated to Operation Lone Star border security issues. You mentioned before, you know, hoping to see more action from the federal government. This has been a very expensive endeavor. You said you'd like to see that money be able to go elsewhere. What do you think, for you and, you know, for your party, for the people in leadership in Texas, do you need to see in order for that decision to be made where the state could pull back from this expenditure?
Sure. I think, I think one of the most frustrating things, and I think most people agree with this, we kind of heard it during testimony, from even some of the Democratic colleagues, is what is, what is the, what is the communication and cooperation look like with the federal government? I, in my conversations with those in Operation Lone Star and Director McCraw is, we would like to work better with the federal government, but there's not a willingness to do so. That is, that is a problem. Because until we get on the same page, until Border Patrol has the same mission that Operation Lone Star does on that border, we're at odds. And we have, we have, in that point, we have very different mindsets of how we are going to secure that border. Until that is in alignment, we're, the state of Texas has to continue to take action. And when I say alignment, it is, it is securing that border. It is making sure that there is, there is, there is not an incentive to illegally illegally enter outside of our ports of entry. It is making sure that we are, you know, using money towards processing illegal ports of entry. It is continuing to vest in those tools that we know works on the border. And so we need more cooperations with the federal government. I think, I believe fully that the, that the state of Texas is willing and ready to, because $10 billion is a lot of money. And we have other things within the state of Texas that we would like to, to take care of. And so I, that is, that is what I would like to see. That is what I fully believe needs to happen. We need, we need to have a serious policy from our federal government level, both in Congress and from the President on what to do about how we're going to secure the border.
All right. Well, we have a couple of minutes for, for audience questions. We have a microphone up right here. I believe there's also an opportunity to ask online for the people listening. If, if anyone has a question, go ahead and step up.
This is a question that's born out of ignorance, I'm sure. But I'm hearing two things, that it's not possible to enter a port of entry, yet it's illegal if you don't go through a port of entry. So I just want some clarification on what's the deal with the ports of entry right now?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because you hear, you know, people on both sides saying, you know, let's just let them go through a port of entry. And I think, from a perspective of, you know, economy and from, you know, our obligations that we have to asylum seekers, we would love for everybody who's currently coming over irregularly right now to present at a port of entry. But unfortunately, the current administration has limited the ability to actually go to a port of entry and request asylum or a work permit. There's no such thing as being able to do that at this point. So ports of entry are currently closed. There is a provision that the Biden administration has attempted to use called the CBP One app, which is where if you can get an application granted on your app, you can then present and request asylum at a port. That is a very, first of all, very difficult process, and it has had all sorts of problems. And it really is not designed to accommodate the number of people that are here requesting asylum. So it is a very circular argument. Don't enter here, go to a port. But you can't enter through a port, which is why they try to enter here. So, again, until we open up, so I'd be curious to hear, for example, Representative Jutan, your perspective. Would you call for the federal government to increase the availability of entrances through ports of entry in Texas?
So I, I think that we need to have, so we're talking about ports of entry where there can be an inspection versus entering the United States without inspection. Those are those, in between the ports. We need to have inspections. And so, and there should be, the federal government has to go through the difficult task of figuring out how we're going to handle asylum seekers and how we're going to handle work permits and who is entering our country. That is, that has to be addressed. There, so my, my short answer is, and I think your question, I'm losing track here where your question is now. But it's, it's, am I, do I believe that the federal government should open up those ports of entry so that there can be processing again? And I think that there does need to be processing, and there does need to be inspections, so that we're ensuring that those dangers, those people on the terrorist watch list, those attempting to bring things into our country illegally are stopped. And those that are attempting to come here with good, reasonable reasons, that there is some sort of path to citizenship, because that is what we're seeking, is a legal path to citizenship that doesn't keep them in the shadows of our society. And this is, these are all federal issues that the federal government needs to figure out, and that's why the state of Texas is handling those areas in between.
JC, and I keep hearing you say the federal government. But, I mean, we've waited for over 30 years. Congress has felt to take action. This is an issue and an emergency situation that is happening right now. Why can't we take it by the horns and address it at the state level and be the leaders for other states to emulate? The Texas Secure Our Border Migrant Processing and Jobs Plan would actually use the land ports. We have the infrastructure there. When they come through customs, the next step, and a lot of these land ports, we have a DPS facility there that conducts inspections of commercial traffic. We could put a temporary tent there where we're processing them. And part of the, the program would, would provide that we would issue a non-voting, clearly distinguishable ID card. It'll say, non-voting ID card, purple in color, different from our driver's license, with an RFID chip in there. That RFID chip would be a way that we could track these migrants. It's harder to forge also that credit card. And that also serves as a credit, almost as a credit card to what we have in our pockets now, so that the money that, since, one of the conditions, they have to be gainful import, the money is deposited in there. And that's where we, as the state, are then able to then charge those annual renewal fees and keep track of those migrants. Again, just think about it. Every one of these proposals that has been put up last session and this session has resulted in billions of dollars of losses to our Texas taxpayers. I'm a small business owner. I grew up knowing how to stretch the dollar since I was 12 years old, working at my family's tortilla factory. I know what it means to know that you have to pay all these taxes. And people expect and want relief. We already provide a property tax relief to them. But when we have over $10 billion that could be used to help our teachers and increase their salaries, to fund public education, to make sure that we are addressing the border infrastructure, all these other health, as JC mentioned, to address the health issues that we face here in Texas, that would be much better use of money. And if there is a plan that can actually generate billions of revenue just in an initial processing fee alone, why wouldn't we want to entertain it? Why would we want to shy away? If we're able to pass this piece of legislation that you are, and I agree with you, it could be suspect to being unconstitutional and doesn't comply with US Arizona. But yet, we're still moving forward because we need to do something and be strong on, on, on crime. Why wouldn't we want to all on the House and on the Senate advocate for a program that would actually generate billions of dollars in revenue? And it's actually, in a way, Mexico or Latin America is paying it, not Texas taxpayers. It makes sense. I don't understand why. You know, it's been four months that I submitted our wording again. Last, during the regular session, Ledge Council drafted it as just a pilot project, and that's not what we wanted, and never got traction. I gave more specific instructions. I told them to comply with US Arizona and narrowly tailor it. It's been four months, and yet I haven't seen that draft back from Ledge Council. But yet, all these other bills have, it's almost as if, is somebody back there not wanting to have the adult conversation in the room? Is somebody holding it back because it just makes too much sense? Because it's actually going to create revenue to the state as opposed to costing us taxpayers monies? Those are the questions that each, and every one of you has to ask.
All right, let's go to Matt for an audience question.
Some questions online, and I also want to make sure we leave some time for this gentleman to ask some questions. This question from online, "Do we have statistics regarding the original destination of the migrants who get apprehended at the Texas border and are then bused to sanctuary cities? If it wasn't Texas, are we aiding and abetting by transporting them further into the United States?"
Yeah, that's a really interesting question. And in fact, a question that I get asked frequently from those that are being charged with human smuggling. They will comment to me, Greg Abbott is busing people by the thousands all over out of Texas. Like, what, what is it that we're doing that's any different than that? And so that's a great question. I mean, I think Representative Morales would agree with me that most people that are crossing in Eagle Pass are not wanting to stay in Eagle Pass. Most of our clients, when they're arrested, they have jobs lined up that they're going to. They don't come here without a plan, for the most part. So they have jobs that they've already been offered, and, you know, the, the jobs are really waiting for them. And many of them are in Texas, and Houston, and Austin, and Dallas, but many others are in different parts of the country. So absolutely, I mean, I think that's a great question, and one that really, you know, I think that that does question the lawfulness of his busing program, for sure.
These are folks, though, my understanding, right, in the, the situation of the Abbott busing, who have already been processed for asylum claims for the federal government, though, right? So it would be different in that regard.
So they have been processed by Border Patrol, but actually, I want to make a point on that. Because House Bill Four, which, again, it subjects anybody who is not a, or who is an alien, and an alien is defined in federal law as somebody who is not a citizen or national of Texas. So it subjects anyone, and that would include people that have already been processed by Border Patrol. There's an affirmative defense built in that if you have lawful presence, that you can then at trial, after you've already been arrested, jailed, and waited for months and months and months in prison for a trial, you can raise an affirmative defense. But the point is, people that have been processed, they're not necessarily here on an asylum claim. They are being put in deportation proceedings and are being given a notice to appear. And so those people are not considered lawfully present in Texas or in the United States, for that matter. So it then does also subject people that have been processed by Border Patrol to arrest, as well as immigrants living lawfully here and citizens as well. I mean, I think everybody is now going to be subject to being potentially detained, arrested, and deported if you are an immigrant.
I just want to clarify one thing, though. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not attorney, I don't play at attorney. It's knowingly conceal, right? And so you're transporting knowingly concealing that individual is And so you're transporting, knowingly concealing that individual is who they say they are, or who they are, is where we run into the issue with smuggling someone. If you are transporting someone and you don't know that they're here illegally, that is not on its own a crime. It is knowingly, trying to knowingly conceal.
So that's, I think, the problem with the statute, and the reason that we saw so much debate, is that 20.05a1a doesn't say anything about actually having to conceal or harbor. It's literally, are you transporting a person in your vehicle with an intent to conceal? And again, law enforcement has made the determination that if that person is undocumented, you are going to be arrested, because they're going to presume that you had an intent, even if you did not know the legal status of the person in your car. And I'm telling you, I see it. I mean, I had, we had a client that was appointed to us last week, and she was literally driving a car with a cousin, she said, her cousin, who was undocumented, and she got arrested for human smuggling.
All right, we'll go, this will be our last question of the event.
So, I'm a security provider for school districts all over the state. One of the interesting things that I run into from my clients down in the Valley, Rio Grande Valley, El Paso, Fort Stockton, where Big Bend is and all that. The question I have is, since you brought up the shared obligation of the Border Patrol versus the state versus the National Guard, I'm concerned about, or more inquisitive about, when these migrants come across and actually cross into a school property, which is not ranchland, it is state, it's a state property or it's a district property, how is that treated as far as trespassing? Because I need to know that to be able to illuminate the data to my customers in those Tough one, sorry about that.
Well, yes, having represented thousands of people charged with criminal trespass, in order for a criminal trespass charge to actually be filed, there has to be a complainant or somebody who's complaining about that. Not only that, but the trespass statute also provides that the person has to have entry that notice was forbidden, or they have to have failed to depart after being told to do so. And so that's a big issue that we see quite often in our clients, is that they're just cutting through somebody's property. And that is not a crime in Texas. If that was the case, then my kids coming home from school, walking across a neighbor's property, could be subject to criminal trespass arrest, and that's just simply not the case, even though we see people being arrested by the thousands for just that. So there has to be, it's really a two-part answer. There has to be somebody complaining, so somebody whose property it is, and then there also has to be notice that that person should not have entered the property.
All right, well, thank you to our panelists for a very substantive discussion. Thank you to the audience for their questions and for being here. That's all for today.[1777.97][1777.97]